Mr. Dean.
Thank you for having me tonight. It's wonderful to see all these wonderful Buckland people. I'm a resident, but tonight I'm here representing the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, which is my day job. And we have a proposal to amend the charter of the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. The charter, original charter, was created back in the late 1990s when the FERCOG was formed by statute. And it's held up pretty well over the last twenty, almost 28 years, I guess now. But the Executive Committee of the FERCOG decided to pursue some amendments, basically looking at some potential changes in leadership positions over the next few years, and thought that this was the time to go down this road, to bring the charter up to date, change some of the little things that were in there that were no longer needed. There's a lot of things related to the transition from county government to the FERCOG, and to get any, you know, new leadership on the, you know, good footing going forward. So this has gone through a process of a Charter Amendment Committee that was made up of representatives from the FERCOG Council, the FERCOG Executive Committee, the Regional Planning Advisory Board, and staff members, and even some of the folks who were on the original Charter writing group 28 years ago were part of this process. So we walked through the entire document and came up with several proposed changes. And that's what we're asking you to take to town meeting to vote. It requires, in order to amend the charter, it requires votes, positive votes, at two-thirds of the 26 municipalities in Franklin County. And those votes need to be two-third majority approval votes.
So each one has to be two-thirds, and then it has to be two-thirds overall?
Correct. So it's a relatively onerous process.
So how many communities account for two-thirds?
Eighteen or nineteen.
Okay.
Twenty-six times two-thirds.
So I have a question as to form.
Yes.
The way it was presented, there was a sort of a single article?
Yes.
And then that article links back to the other amendment changes. Those don't have to be in the warrant themselves, they just have to be available as?
I think it-
As like handouts or available in the town clerk's office?
I think it depends on how each town handles that.
Wants to structure it?
Wants to structure it. I don't think there's any required way to do it from the FERCOG's perspective.
Okay.
You know, there's a lot of pages of paper if you put it all in your warrant. You know, we can certainly make it available, a copy of the marked-up version for the town clerk if we reference it that way.
We do have the clean version, we have the marked-up version.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that if we did it that way, which is to include the single article in the warrant with a reference that, you know, the details can be found, you know, so either at the town clerk's office, on the website in advance of the meeting, and then on page such-and-such in the town meeting warrant book that would be available at town meeting.
Yes.
That would be my proposal, but I wanted to make sure that if we did it that way, that it doesn't negate the approval process for FERCOG, but that's all.
No, I think from our perspective, you know, the vote on the amended document is-
Okay.
-what we would like.
Great.
We do have a two-page fact sheet that we can make available in bulk for handout at the town meeting, or I think we sent this around, but I have copies.
Great, that'd be-
If you want.
They were linked in your agenda, but if you didn't have a second to look-
This is evidence in your case.
Thank you, Bob.
And that, on the back of it, has a QR code.
Right.
So, you know, that could be available for anybody at the meeting that wants to- that knows how to use their phone to scan a QR code.
There'll be two QR code opportunities at this town meeting.
Oh, really?
One that will be for the signing up for the reverse 911 Code Red service in FERCOG.
Wow.
Look, I know.
We're getting techs on-
This is great, Tim.
Everybody bring your cell phones to town meeting and then turn the volume up.
We also have a presentation that could be made available. This is what was given to the Executive Committee and the FERCOG Council to explain the changes proposed. Goes into a little more detail than the fact sheet. The QR code takes you to the FERCOG website, and all of these documents are listed there, including the original charter, the redlined or marked-up version with the proposed amendments included, and then the presentation. I can give you a copy of this.
Yes.
I only have one.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of pages.
It is. I think I have it in electronic format, and my intention was to sort of assemble all of the handouts that are being proposed and send them along to the moderator and just confirm that they're good with having all of those between the FERCOG and the town. We can make enough copies and so... Because I do think that there's a lot of material here, and it would be, I'd, having a number of representatives that are employed at FERCOG, also living in the town of Bucklin, makes it easier to be able to have people on hand if town meeting has questions. But I think the more information we can get out early, the better.
Well, this, you don't think this requires, we should have a night in plan to come here and talk about it? I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, I, you don't, that's too much.
I wonder what attendance would be like.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm not expecting huge attendance, but there, you know, if anybody's interested, I don't know.
If you're having a free town meeting, meeting to go through the warrant, be happy to be there for that.
I don't know, I'm just wanting to, I don't find anything here that I certainly, but see, we have working relations with this particular group of people, you know, you guys, and I respect everything I do, so it's a little easier for me than, let's say, some other people, though.
Well, when this is brought to the floor, someone from FERCOG can speak on it, correct? Or Phoebe will recognize-
Oh, okay, well, that Bob here will have, oh.
Phoebe will recognize someone who could speak.
Right, right. I think Phoebe would prefer not to speak to it.
No, no, she-
As the moderator, but I'm-
Right.
I'm prepared to take off my Finance Committee hat and speak to it if there are questions.
Well, I was tasked with the, yesterday, to ask you a hard question.
Okay.
So I was, so I was looking through it, actually, and, you know, having the red lines makes it a lot easier. And it seemed that most of the amendments in this charter appeared to be updates and wording. Other than that, what are the significant changes being proposed that Bucklin will be interested in?
Significant changes? Well, we are proposing to eliminate the FERCOG as an arbiter of unresolved dog hearings. So if you've got particularly nasty dog hearings, right now, the FERCOG charter allows a town to petition the FERCOG to basically handle the dog hearing.
Why did we not know that on the-
I was just going to ask you that, you're the-
Well, for 28 years, it's never been used, and-
They hid it from us.
I don't know that they hid it from us, but I-
No, no, I'm teasing you. No, we haven't, no, I think, yeah, we've done pretty well. We've got the Police Department involved and Kyle Dragon, so-
We made it through.
Yeah, yeah.
But the issue that we had was that two of the three members had a conflict of interest and were not able to sit through the hearing. So it left one member. So we, not knowing that we had an opportunity to, because I, you know, certainly worked with Kyle Dragon with the Sheriff's Office, and he didn't know this either, because we ended up pulling in an officer from Shelburne.
Sergeant, yes.
To sit in. Worked out wonderfully, but, and I think that the Sheriff's Office is looking to create a, for lack of a better term, a regional hearing committee that would be posed as a bylaw to the towns to change, instead of the select board being your hearing officers for animal control issues, there would be a regional service. And it would take some of the likelihood of there being conflicts of interest, because you'd be, you'd have a ever-rotating group of regional members to serve.
Makes a lot of sense.
Doesn't it?
But with-
Having sat in one of those chairs for six years.
But with FERCOG getting out of that, or getting, FERCOG getting out of that particular thing right there, that's not a bad idea, that I'm glad that they're thinking of that, because I think it still needs a group, but I like the idea of that.
Although they have the option of, if they don't like the decision that's made, they can go to the court.
That's kind of what we were thinking, is that the District Court is always the-
Always.
-always there for appeal.
Yeah.
What else you got, Bob?
Well, there is language in there now that clarifies how a town outside of Franklin County can join the FERCOG.
Oh.
And how a town within the FERCOG can leave the FERCOG. So it was a little bit, it was unclear, really, especially the towns outside of Franklin County joining. You know, the way it currently reads, if they vote to join, there's no way for the council to say no, at least in the, you know, they can work on a plan to, you know, what it might cost and all that stuff, but this would clarify, no, here's the steps that you would need to take. And it really comes down to the Regional Planning Agency aspect of what we do, which is written into Mass General Law. And having someone who is a member of a different Regional Planning Agency becoming a member of the FERCOG, we've never really been able to figure out how that would work. Similarly, if a town in Franklin County were to leave, what happens to that Regional Planning Agency aspect of what we do for that town? So we would now ask that, you know, towns get essentially approval from the state through the legislative process to change RPAs or-
So that's a charter change that's for towns that you have listed in the blue here, sort of on our agenda? It's, it says, FERCOG overview and charter change final for towns, is that, is that what you're talking about?
It could be. I'm not exactly sure what you're looking at.
I didn't get the chance to-
How many towns do we, do we have towns from outside our border to, who have joined?
No.
No.
There have never been any towns, there have been a few towns that have kicked the tires, so to speak.
Yeah.
But no serious efforts to join.
Okay.
And I don't expect that that would change, but it could, and this would, you know, having the updated language in the charter would just help to clarify for anybody looking at it down the road. All right, here's the process that needs to happen in order for that to take place.
Well, FERCOG offers a lot of benefits and a lot of services that aren't offered in other counties.
We do, yeah, especially our collective highway products and services. We provide the bidding for those services, products and services to, I think we're up to 57 towns at this point.
Wow.
Across, well, Worcester County, all the way west.
Well, I was thinking of, you know, building inspections, you know, it's hard, I can remember when, you know, each town would have someone in their town who was the building inspector, which oftentimes doesn't, doesn't work.
Right.
Or may not have the wherewithal where you have a really good inspection program.
Yeah, I think there are some things that make sense to be done regionally. I'm kind of partial to that model, but there are some things that doesn't work so well regionally, and-
Good. So they're not, these changes are not really mind-boggling, I can see so far as to-
Yeah, and I just want to point out that the proposed changes don't make, so the proposed amendments don't make any changes to the formula that dictates town voting powers or the financial membership commitment. So those, you know, that's going to remain the same.
Okay, which is important.
It's not, the proposal in this charter amendment. Any other questions?
Anything else?
I tried to answer.
So you think those are the two significant changes?
I mean, there are other changes, I can run through them real quick if you want, just, it talks about, like, right now, the Executive Committee is the hiring authority for our planning director and our finance director. The proposal is to change that so that the executive director hires the planning director and the finance director. There are other, you know, director-level positions that the executive director is the appointing authority for, and-
It's easy structure.
It's a structural change that-
It is, yeah.
So, you know, there's changes to the Regional Planning Agency section. You know, what we have now is unwieldy, where each town select board and each planning board can appoint a person to the regional planning board. And then there are at-large positions in there, so, you know, we're up to, I don't know, over 60 planning, regional planning board members, rarely getting a quorum of those people, so, you know, the proposal is to streamline that a little bit more, get more subject matter experts perhaps involved. Still providing advisory information to the council, which is what, you know, they don't have a, any kind of legal or legislative authority, but they are advisory to the council and the Executive Committee. So that, that work would still be done, you know, looking at things on a planning regional We are proposing a reduction in the voting threshold for future charter changes. So I mentioned it requires a two-thirds majority vote at two-thirds of the town meetings. Proposal is to reduce the majority vote to a simple majority in the town, still requiring two-thirds of the towns to approve it.
Makes sense.
And then there are other little things that are, like removing the references to, you know, transition from the county to the, to the COG that was necessary early on. Here's how we're going to, you know, do all this work and change. And then there are a few typos and references to the wrong statutes.
Okay.
So that will be cleaned up.
Okay.
Any other questions, or?
No, I think, I think-
No, remove your FERCOG hat and put on your finance hat.
Yes.
You think it's, you think it's good? Seriously, all this stuff. You think it's-
I'm voting against it.
Okay, no. If you were involved, Bob, I have a lot of respect for you.
It's, well, it's not changing, it's not changing the assessment model, so, you know, how that is figured out would still be the same.
Same, okay.
And, you know, it's not making any changes structurally to any of the fee-for-service programs.
Do a little streamlining, I saw there, I could see that, yeah.
Yeah, mainly in, you know, in the operation of the agency as a whole.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
You're getting out of here quick before we do the next one.
Yeah.
So basically, just to stay on that one for a minute, it looks like not big changes and nothing that we should, I'm very comfortable with it, so, yeah, okay. That's one, the next one is our first, right next to Delightum, is the FY '26 Budget Update Salary Adjustments, and one of our three distinguished administrators, assistant administrators-
Oh, Winston.
Oh, you, my dear. Your last meeting, I'm going to get every last bit out of you.
My boy, like her attitude.
So you have in your packets, and we will be making it available online after you approve it tonight. You have a final version, a final draft of the budget that was reviewed and approved last night, or recommended last night by the Finance Committee. It is a narrow margin that we are under the levy or in the black. It is the narrowest of the margins that we've been at since I've been here in 2019. We are clearly seeing the impacts of some double-digit increases to non-negotiable services such as healthcare, which came in at 18 and 20% this year. Our senior services assessment, due to mid, to requirements of the district, brought us up another 18% in senior services. Our police department also, you know, our shared services with the town of Shelburne had some significant increases. There really wasn't a section of the budget that there were not the significant increases. However, I know that the memo that the Finance Committee does every year and makes available to residents and reads at your town meeting will address all of those, as well as a proposal for how to manage the budget going, going forward, because you're, you're clearly at a crossroads. In 2023, the town meeting approved an override in the amount of 151, 272, which was to the dollar, the amount that we were short that year. It enabled us to get through last year's budget without too much trouble, but clearly we're seeing that we're right back where we started this year. We went through, Cara and Pam and I have taken, to say that we sharpened our pencils and took some critical looks at where we had discretion to make reductions. We have, you know, those reductions sometimes didn't amount to more than $50, but where we could, we reduced in order to be able to get above, above the deficit. So it's not great news unless you look at the picture from a more macro view, which is that every city and town in the state of Massachusetts and probably beyond are facing very similar issues. I follow the list serve and the commentary from other town administrators who are either unable to balance, and if they're unable to balance at this stage of the game, you know, we're all looking at town meeting, if they can't balance now, they're not going to. So they're making decisions to either seek overrides or throw free cash at it. And we know that throwing free cash at a deficit in a budget only creates a bigger hole for the next year. So I guess if I'm looking, if I want to spin it to a more positive view, which tonight, on my last night in front of you, I'd like to, we are balanced, and we are balanced without having to use free cash and without having to seek an override. Pam will be having a very difficult and different conversation with you all next year. But for now, I'm, I'm getting out by the skin of my teeth.
Well, it's thanks to you that we have that, the skin of your teeth.
No, you know, you know what it really is, thanks to, is a fantastic working relationship with the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and with staff. This is not a one-person job, especially the budget. It really is a lot of hard conversations and a lot of people coming up with what-ifs and how, when, and the what-abouts. You know, we look at the nondiscretionary items that we have in that budget, and a lot of it is due to our shared services, which are, you know, tremendously beneficial to the community as a whole. But when you do not have the ability to adjust those assessments because you're not the, you're not the managing authority, you're not the supervisory authority, it does make it very challenging because it really limits the number of- because it really limits the number of other items that you have discretion over.
I'll tell you, for three years, for three years, it's, uh, I, I look back and like fondly think of these three years gone by that, you know, all the things we did. I, I, every time I drive in North Street, I think about it and then I remembered South Street the same way and the COVID ailment, et cetera, et cetera. And how Avery and that up there was, uh, you know, and can't forget their rural yard and other things. It's, it's amazing. It's amazing what we were able to get done. Things were better times then, I know, because of the finances, but, uh, you know, our heads high with them.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think we'll make it through.
Absolutely. And the, the projects that you're, they, they, you're referring to are, were, were all mostly funded through grants, some of it through chapter ninety, some of it with local funds, very little with local funds. And I think that Buckland has been very fortunate, uh, to receive the amount of grants that we have to be able to do those, those, those projects.
That helps.
Again, a lot of, a lot of good help. And it isn't even just writing the grants, it's, it's managing them. And, and so we have a, we have a great, and you have a pool.
I know.
We have a pool.
And a new salt shed that looks like you could have concerts.
And a new salt shed. And, and pretty soon you're gonna have a really beautiful new building at your transfer station. So, so I think that we have made good, positive investments, um, um, and but your, but your operational budget is very narrow. We will make it available, um, uh, to residents, uh, as soon as, um, as soon as we can get it into a shape that it's, you know, legible for, 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 for people. Um, and we'll post the memo from the finance committee as well. I do wanna make sure that, that, um, that we're hitting on the fact that although it is, um, one of the priorities that the finance committee had, and I know that the select board sort of supported that, was making sure that your team, that your, that the, the, your, your staff is, um, is, uh, adequately, you know, I say adequately, um, compensated. You, you approved several meetings ago with three percent plus fifty cent COLA. And on top of that, we are looking to provide merit increases for three positions. Or we're gonna provide merit increases for four positions, um, three of those at a dollar. Town, um, uh, the director of assessing and the treasurer collector and the highway superintendent. And then the fourth position, which is the highway facilities position, which has taken on, um, that position, that individual has taken on so many additional responsibilities in the past twelve months. It's amazing what we can throw at that, throw at Jake and he catches and delivers. So he is up for a dollar twenty-five, um, to bring him more in line with what other facilities managers are making. So those increases, including the three and a half, the three percent and five, fifty cents are in the budget, which is balanced. But because you set salaries, I'm just gonna hope that either you can incorporate that into the motion, um, when you approve the budget. The one increase that I do not have reflected in the budget because I, I haven't heard anything back from, you know, we could talk about that a little bit more, is the salary increase requested by your elected town clerk's position, um, that is not in here. And I just want, we can go back and, and, and put it in if that's the direction that the board wants to go. So I guess I'll just stop talking there and just let you, let me know how you wanna handle any additional salary requests.
Now, do you, do you need the, the motion that is put down here for the budget itself and that you would like that to make the official's favor?
Yeah, yeah.
Clerk's position, I, I, I really don't know yet. I think that needs some more study.
Okay.
My opinion.
I, I would like Clint to be a part of that discussion.
Yeah, as I said, I don't think it's detailed or study.
So I, I just have to say that it's your, you're in your, we're into the first meeting in April. You can see that we're just about five thousand dollars over levy, which means, or under levy. Thank you. We're just about five thousand dollars under levy. So, and, and I'm, we can certainly wait another meeting to make that decision.
That's the last meeting.
But, uh, you know, a change to the budget now would have to throw it back to your finance committee, for their review of that. And you set salaries.
Okay.
But to increase that salary, if you go, if you, if you were to approve the salary at its face request, we'd, we'd be in a deficit. If you wanted to look at some, some increase that keeps us, and so I, I guess, just to be perfectly clear, if you, if we go into deficit, that means I have to go in and make additional cuts. Which we would find them. I'm not sure where, but we would find them. But if you wanted to, I, I guess, in order for us to not have to make additional cuts, if at your next meeting, which I may, I, I don't think I would be here for, I just would request that you pay attention or, or, or be aware of where you are with that, um, levy so that we don't.
I'd like to express my concerns about it. Okay, first of all, I mean, I was, I've attended a, a lot of finance committee meetings and I've seen what we have to do to get it to even have five thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
It's not a good number.
It's not a good number. And, um, my concern is that, and I'm sorry that, um, Alicia's not here to talk about it, but she's requesting to be paid for twenty-two hours, but made it clear that, that she would not necessarily.
Twenty-five hours.
The position was approved back in twenty twenty-two to be a twenty-five hour work week.
Okay.
That was the last time an adjustment was made to that position, but of course, it's up to the, the discretion of that elected official, you know, how they.
That I'm not understanding. So what, what, what did she?
So the last time that the select board took this up, which was twenty twenty-two, right, was, there was a discussion with the, with a then-town clerk, that that particular clerk was working twenty-five hours.
Okay.
And that twenty-five hours was assigned a salary.
Okay.
Okay. That salary, um, because the clerk is not an appointed position, they don't report to anybody, really reflects whether it be twenty-five hours or twelve hours or thirty hours, the salary is the exact same.
Right.
And that would, that would never change. So over the next several appointments and over the last few years, the town clerk's hours have adjusted, not by much, but, um, through conversations between, from one clerk to the other. And that twenty-five hours, um, was lost in translation. And our current town, town clerk, when she, um, put her, her, her name on the, on the, on the ballot, thought she was working a twenty-two hour work week, right? Twenty-two?
I think so.
Yeah. And, and, which is, which is again, still completely within the discretion of the town clerk. You know, the town clerk can set their own hours, whether it be ten hours a week or fifty hours a week. That's up to them. The salary remains the same. So I think that what the, w- we're all having sort of trouble sort of aligning this and, and getting our, as, as you said, getting, getting your head around it, is that, that twenty-five hours is a, is a moving target. And I think that the town clerk is now proposing that, that they would like to work the twenty-five hours, but get an increase as they presented about four thousand dollars. To be able to work that twenty-five hours.
But she said that she might not be able to do those hours during the summertime.
Correct, correct. She does have some commitments.
Some family commitments, right? I mean, it's not as if she's not getting an increase like everybody.
Well, exactly. Look here, she's, she's getting an increase, uh,
Yeah.
going on there, about sixteen hundred dollars and another sixteen, something like that. I mean, I, I would like that as a teacher. Do you want the truth?
With a, with a three percent plus fifty cents COLA, that, that, that position, there, there, that position wasn't always eligible for a COLA.
Yeah.
So that's, it, it became sort of, that position did fall down in the wage scale. A few years ago, the select board made a decision that that position should get the COLA, just like every other employee.
Okay.
So if you use the three percent and fifty cents, the, the, the increase that that position is getting is about four point seven percent, which is not a bad, you know, and it's consistent with what every other employee, with the exception of the four positions that we've already talked about, um, have been called out for. Um, and again, those are based on merit, and the work that they're doing and their contributions that, you know, I think exceed expectations and, you know, we'd like to be able to offer that for retention purposes.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, that, that helps a lot because I, I, and I, I'm seeing an increase here, each one of, going just, just for the salary. Doesn't, doesn't that person also pick up things, uh, from elections or things like that?
Yep, um, yep.
Something.
They, they, they negotiated last year that they'd like, that they, they get two hundred and fifty dollars per election. So in an, in an election year where you have one election, the stipend is two hundred and fifty dollars. And in a year that you have three elections, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Or four, you have a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Or four.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So there is that as, as well.
I would like to, just my opinion again here, I'd like to, uh, you know, eventually make a motion to accept what you've offered for the four other positions. And I think we just leave the, in my opinion, just to leave the clerk alone for this year at this, she's, that person is getting a raise, uh, we'll walk, talk to the hours. And I know next year may be tough, but let's look at her, that position again next year. We can only take care of so many and, um, you know, at one time. And I think Alicia's getting an increase and, uh, let's see. That's just my opinion, but.
Well, and I appreciate the service she's giving the town.
Oh, yes.
You know, she runs, runs that position well. The elections went off smoothly. I just look at this, what we have excess and it's just so.
It's scary.
It's scary. And, but I'm really glad that we're able to give a COLA, you know, and that's, um, you know, cost of living adjustment. And four point seven percent is, 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 you know.
I, I think it's, uh, I'm comfortable with that. I really am.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So would you like a motion on the other four?
Well, yep, yeah. Yes, please.
Okay, we've, uh, make a motion to approve the FY, well, we're also approving the, the FY twenty-six budget too at the same time. We're well aware of that. Okay. As presented and recommended by the finance committee. In addition to the previously voted COLA of three percent plus fifty cents, there are one dollar merit increases for treasurer slash collector, director of assessing and highway foreman. Where's our? Okay. And there's a one dollar and twenty-five cent merit increase for the highway facilities manager position.
I second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, I wish, I wish we could pay everyone more, you know?
No, that's really true.
But, you know, I think the.
We have to go. The times are dictating to us. Right now, the times are dictating. I, we're gonna have to be very careful here. Okay, shall we take a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. So with the exception of one Epstein.
So I, I just would like to say that I think that your, that the, the budget in your decisions for the mer- for the COLAs as well as, are, are very generous and really go a long way to show the town, the town officials' support of, of staff. I don't think that they're too high, but I also think that they're probably higher than what a lot of communities are looking at this, this year. And, and that doesn't go unappreciated, it doesn't go unnoticed. It, for a community that has unfortunately let our, our salaries fall behind market, I think that the select board and the finance committee in the last couple of years have done an amazing job of trying to catch staff up. It, it is coming, this, the, the, uh, this year's is coming at a, at a crux with other, with other, uh, increases to, to the budget. And the fact that you're still willing to sort of show the staff that they come first, I think is just exceptional. And I, and I'll speak on behalf of everybody. Thank you. Thank you for that.
We got a great crew. It's, I wish we had more money. I wish we did. If I was Musk, I'd throw you all whatever you wanted. No, we're not.
Hold them to that.
I told you, when they, when they had a neighbor, had a neighbor, he was citing my, uh, before we get into the nomination things. And he goes, uh, well, he says, you know, must pay the guy a million dollars to, you know, give him a million dollar check for a summer night. He said, he said, could you maybe go half? The friend, you know, I said, you know better than that. He just started laughing, you know, but.
Well, I know, I've worked in the private sector and there, there were times when things were so tough, there were no raises.
No, no. Even, even one day, we, we got, we lucky if we got a, you know, if we got a raise, I mean, many years we had two percent raises and that, that's, you know what I mean? And, uh, we can, we'll try harder next year. Who knows what the Nick York and that's gonna be like. We just don't know.
You may not have this option next year.
Exactly.
So I think that doing it this year, as close as we are to the, to the margin, I think is, it just speaks, speaks volumes. And, and I, and I know that staff appreciates it, especially where they're, where they're facing an eighteen percent increase to their health insurance. So you think about, you know, that, that three, that three percent and fifty cent increase, quite a bit of that will be gobbled up by that health insurance increase. So it's, it's good. Thank you very much for your support on that. I think that does it for the budget.
Yeah.
We can talk a little bit more about some of the additional, um, capital items as we look at the town meeting warrant, which is still a budget issue, but maybe for the sake of time and keeping things moving along.
Right.
We can look at the.
Shall we go for the twenty, twenty-five annual town meeting warrant review?
Let's do it.
And you gonna lead us through that, young lady, in your last day?
I am. I am. So a lot of these, we've already looked at and discussed at, at your last meeting. Articles, uh, one through, uh, one, two and three, um, boilerplate, article three is your elected salaries. Article four, your town operating budget, which you just approved. We're, I think it's two, two point three six mil- two point three million dollars is your, is your, um, your town operating expenses. You have your Mohawk Regional School District Assessment, which is about two point nine million.
May I ask a question? So we don't have the amounts that are on, on the.
So for the warrant that you post, which is this document, no.
Okay.
At your next meeting, you'll have your motions.
Okay.
And in your motions, the reason that we do that, Joan, is because if you post the numbers, they can't go up and they, and they can only go down. And in the event that there's any errors or omissions or that we just talked about with salaries, you live with that number until May third and you have to amend it on town meeting floor. This way we avoid locking, locking you into any particular number.
Thanks for the clarification.
No, absolutely. Your, um, uh, your Mohawk Regional School Bus, School Budget District Assessment is only a two percent increase, or not, not even a two percent in- increase. I can pull that right up. Your capital assessment is approximately sixty-three thousand dollars. Article eight is an article that replaces the, uh, the emergency repair and replacement of a boiler system at the high school. Your tech assessment, this was another one that, uh, really, um, kinda came out of left field for us. We went from having eighteen students to twenty-four students. And so that, that assessment, um, went up substantially.
I think we've been of the towns involved are one of the highest for, for the tech. We certainly are the highest at Mohawk. We certainly are the highest at Buckland Shelburne.
Yeah.
These people in Buckland have their children.
I know. Well, I mean,
Let them.
Yeah, the, uh, tech, tech does a great job and. Yeah, the, uh, tech, tech does a great job and, um.
That's why kids wanna go there.
And, and kids wanna, wanna go there. Um, Mohawk is, is a, just, we just can't seem to quite catch up.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I'm just gonna go back, yeah, you're, um. So. Uh, we do not have any students attending, um, Smith, Smith-Vogue this year, so we are not, um, we are, we are, we are not raising and appropriating any money for that. Just to go back to your Franklin County Tech, that, 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 that budget is, um, three hundred and four thousand dollars.
Three hundred and four?
Oh, we in twenty-five?
Oh, yep, we are, yep. Um, and just for comparisons sake, the, um, last year's tech assessment. Last year's tech assessment was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen. So you have an eighty thousand dollar increase or thirty-six percent increase in your tech budget alone.
Mm-hmm.
But isn't, isn't a per pupil cost less?
Mm-hmm, but because you have so many students.
And I don't begrudge them going there.
Nope, no, no, I.
None of us do, like, I hope people understand that.
So just as, as we go through here, I, I, I wanna draw out, so as you know, you've, we've all been familiar with Proposition Two and a Half.
Yes.
Um, so if, if our, if, if our budget can only go up two and a half percent, and here we have a increase at thirty-six percent, you can see where the math starts going a little sideways. That's all, I just wanna kind of point those out as we go along. Um, and I think that, that, again, going back to your Mohawk, um, the FY twenty-five appropriation was two point, two point nine, uh, two million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand. This year, the, the request is two million, nine hundred and ninety-five. That's a seventy-six thousand dollar increase, but only a two point six. So again, still crazy, crazy big numbers, um, but those percentages really tell the story. And I think Mohawk has done a good job of keeping their, um, keep, keeping their assessment as low as possible for, for Buckland. Um, so that is Articles seven, eight, nine, and ten. Um, we get into the wastewater treatment facility with Articles eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Um, we are looking at only, um, uh, minor increases in all of those budgets for just, um, uh, in, increase to expenses. Um, the salary line for your wastewater will go up significantly. Um, as those of you who sit through the Sewer Commission meetings know, we have struggled to recruit a grade four or higher operator for that position. Um, it is a requirement of our Mass DEP permit that we have a grade four or, or higher chief operator. The grade four chief operator that we have retired three years ago, uh, he can.
But I saw him working the other day.
I know, I know. Um, it, it would be nice if we could allow that retirement to, to happen. Um, so recent Sewer Commission meetings, we've been discussing, um, how to solve that problem. And the only thing we can come up with is an increase to the salary. Um, we advertised the position, and I believe we've had up to four, four.
In there.
Four, four operators that are grade four or higher.
That's great.
So apparently, moving the dial on the salary was the correct thing. Unfortunately, it does mean an impact to your wastewater budget. But we're hoping that there's some offsets, um, with our solar, which we'll talk about later, that will help, help, help balance, balance that out. Um, so that is, um, where we are. That Article fourteen is your town capital expenses. These are items to be purchased using free cash. Um, the town certified three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in free cash this year, which is a fantastic, um, a fantastic number. Uh, free cash is the amount of money that, uh, we have for one-time, non-recurring expenses. Um, we're going to, um, make a, the first of three payments on a, um, highway truck. Uh, first of five payments on a new, um, F-550 highway truck. Um, we'll put seventy-five thousand dollars into a repaving fund, which the crew uses for road maintenance. Um, ten thousand dollars for the shared police capital expense. Um, we have thirty thousand dollars sitting in a stabilization account um, that this would be added to, um, for the purchase of a new. Shelburne is purchasing a new, uh, police cruiser and doing some, um, uh, improvements to their bulletproof vest inventory. Um, we're looking at a ten thousand dollar, uh, payment for the Nilman Road debt repayment. This is your final payment, um, rather than taking it from operating, which is where we would have taken it in previous years, um, and knowing that we don't have any money in our operating budget anymore, uh, we're gonna take it from free cash since it's a non-recurring expense, it's, it's final. And then lastly, we've been, um, funding the Buckland Museum, um, uh, on Upper Street uh, for ten thousand dollars each year as they're moving through some important safety, um, improvements to their electrical, uh, services. Um, so that is your capital from free cash. Article fifteen, capital expenses using housing trust funds. Uh, the town has been accruing an amount, uh, 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 some funds, um, that are repaid to the town from previous grant housing rehab loans. Um, we are proposing using twenty-one thousand dollars from that account to do some, um, to put the electrical service to the new salt shed, so that we can have the band concerts there. Yep, 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 so they'll be, they're gonna, um.
There's good sound equipment, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna put a new pole in and run, and, uh, run LEDs in the spotlight to that. We'll make sure that we angle the spotlight appropriately, so it doesn't shine in anybody's windows for anybody that lives on either William and or North that is concerned about that. Um, and then we're also gonna do some LED replacements in the Mayu Building, which the, uh, crew has done a really great job of restoring and using it for storage. The problem is, is that the old lights don't work, um, so they can only get to their storage in daylight hours. Um, so the, and then we're gonna put fifty thousand dollars towards capital repairs for this building, including some structural issues that we have, um, that has been brought to our attention from, from, uh, in the basement. Um, yeah, we, we don't wanna lose the assessor's office into the basement. Uh, Article sixteen is your town debt service. Um, this is, uh, the only, the only debt that the town has is on the highway garage and the residual debt from the renovation of this building. Um, so your total debt appropriation is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is it the last one?
Oh, gosh, no, no, this, uh, twenty forty-one, I believe, twenty forty-one is your last debt payment on that. Um, yeah, two years.
I'm just gonna see if I'm still gonna be here, I mean, here on earth.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
How many years was the, the?
I believe it's a thirty-year loan.
Okay, well, and what was the total on that? Ballpark, you don't remember? All right, it's all right.
Yeah. Um.
It's okay, you don't.
We'll, we'll make sure we have that number for Town Meeting, Joan.
It does look lovely.
Absolutely, it's a, it's a.
It's a nice, clean place and.
If you think about the facilities that the highway crew has worked out, including, worked out of Fifty Conway Street, the old Mayu Building, I mean, they, they deserve, they, they deserve a safe building. Um, and that's what the town has provided for them.
Right, I agree with you.
Yeah. Um, other post-employment benefits, commonly known as OPEB, um, we will put another twenty thousand into that trust using funds from free cash. This is a, uh, reoccurring, um, payment that we, um, are using our free cash for. I believe this is our fourth or fifth installment payment for that. Um, we don't have any at this, any prior fiscal year invoices in this moment, however. Um, however, you have, we, they pop up, so I am leaving that article on there. If I take it off, I will jinx us, and one will arrive in iron boxes tomorrow, so it stays. Article nineteen, this is a petition article from the Historic Commission. Um, they, uh, they received a grant from the Mass Historic Commission in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, that grant is, has a match requirement at fifty percent. Um, so they will be asking Town Meeting to, um, appropriate twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, for that survey work. They have a presentation that they'll be sharing with Town Meeting, um, on May third. Um, in order to pay for that, um, they would have to, because I, once again, as we've talked about a couple of times, there is no more money, um, in our operating budget. Um, so they were tasked with finding a, um, a fund, um, probably free cash. Um, and they, their recommendation will be to reduce the amount of money that we would put into our stabilization account by the twelve thousand, five hundred dollars in order to pay for that survey. Um, that would, it's a, the Finance Committee meeting, the, the Finance Committee has not made a recommendation uh, to support or not support that, they really do feel that that's a Town of Buckland, um, uh, decision to make. Um, so they will make it on May third. Uh, and then that leads me to stabilization. Um, after the capital items that we spoke of and the OPEB and the debt service for Nilman Road, it leaves you with a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of your available free cash. Um, the recommendation that the Finance Committee has, and again, this could be amended by a positive, um, vote for the article for the Historical Commission's site survey for their grant match. But not knowing whether that would be approved or not, the recommendation is for twenty-seven thousand dollars for general stabilization, forty thousand to put into highway stabilization, two thousand to be put into the election stabilization, two thousand to be put into your technology stabilization, twenty thousand to be put into your transfer station stabilization account, and twenty thousand to be put into your police stabilization account.
So basically, these are like savings accounts.
Yep, exactly. Um, in order to use the funds in these savings accounts, a future Town Meeting would need a two-thirds vote to take money out of them. Um, so it is, um, it is an incentive to leave it there and let it continue to accrue. Um, we know that if we put forty thousand dollars into the highway stabilization account, we know that that's at least half of the payment that we would need for year two of the lease of the truck that we would be, be purchasing. Um, which I think, given the fact that we don't know what next year brings, I think that's really smart to have that money put aside.
So, so they earmarked inside stabilization what the, what the, these amounts can be spent on, correct?
Well, they would have to be spent, so the twenty thousand could only be spent on police type services, yeah, yeah. Um, we know that the transfer station, um, we would be looking at replacing a compactor, um, so we'd like to start putting some money aside there. And then obviously, we know that, uh, we, we have a responsibility to fifty percent of police stabilization or, um, I'm sorry, police capital expenses for the Town of Shelburne. Um, so putting twenty thousand dollars into that account brings us probably, you know, may, maybe not halfway to what we would need next year, but, um, a good chunk.
Has, has the Buckland Police, I mean, sorry, the Shelburne Police Department ever thought of increasing the amount of towns that it serves?
That'd be a good question for your Advisory Committee member, who's Clinton.
I think I've heard people talk about it, Joan, uh, Colraine and, uh, the Colraine.
Chalamet.
Small town, um, Chalamet, yeah, I haven't heard, but I heard some from Colraine. People, they were saying, you know, it'd be nice, in fact, the, the one policeman they have lives here in Buckland. I'd not say you have another, but, uh, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. I, I see that becoming a reality sometimes with the regionalization of the smaller towns around here.
Um, so that is it for your, for your financial articles?
Uh-huh.
Um, so there's certainly lots, lots, lots going on there. Um, I think it is a really good mix of taking advantage of your free cash and your housing rehab, uh, trust fund, uh, money, um, spreading it out a little bit. And then also, it's been a few years since we've been able to put any real money into stabilization. Um, so I think, uh, it's a pretty responsible and diverse, uh, set of recommendations. Um, moving into your general bylaw amendments.
I just wanna say something, I'm just so impressed at how everybody can handle all these, these finances, these, the arithmetic, the math, you know?
It's a tremendous, she's tremendous, but we also are tremendous, but we also, we need to pay our due respect for them.
I can, I can assure you that it is not your town administrator that is doing the arithmetic.
I, I count, I just look at the Finance Board, if they say something, I, I believe them.
No, I mean.
With Team Buckland, you know?
Yeah, we have, we put lots of sets of eyes on these numbers, um, to make sure that they're accurate. Um, they don't let me get away with anything, I can't.
No, that's why they're good.
That's why they're, that's why they're amazing. Um, so you've got a couple of general bylaw amendments. The Town Clerks has a bylaw review committee, uh, that meets periodically. They're recommending several, um, changes that Phoebe was in a few months ago to discuss those. I think the big one, um, is, uh, changing, well, this, this is to, changing the date that Annual Town Meeting, uh, meets on from a Saturday to a Tuesday.
Why is it being proposed, what?
Well, it, it was always, always held during the week, pre-COVID. Um, and then during COVID, there was a consensus that we wanted to meet outside and, um, those Saturday morning, boy, did we have some Saturday morning Town, Town Meetings, boy, those were epic, they were, oh, yeah. When the tent fell on my head, that was, that was fantastic.
But was there any more, or any less, or fewer people at, on a Saturday morning, rather than, you know?
I think in the, I think the first couple of Town Meetings that we had outside in the parking lot were really well attended. There was a novelty feature about that. And then I think for staff and the people that, you know, for false cable, it was just so challenging to do the, um, setup, um, in the parking lot.
Inside.
And then we moved inside to Saturday. Uh, so this was a recommendation from the Bylaw Review Committee. Um, they feel that, uh, there's, there's enough, um, there's been enough conversation about putting it back to a weekday. Again, it's why we bring it to Town Meeting, so we get everybody's opinion. Um, and what else do they have?
Do you need, is it a majority vote, or does it have to be two thirds for a?
Uh, general bylaw is a majority vote.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. Um, moving into zoning bylaw amendments, um, tho, these do require a two-thirds vote. And they are mostly, um, aligning our current bylaws with changes to state regulations as they pertain to accessory dwelling units, which the cool kids call ADUs. Um, so just as we talk about ADUs, you can be in the know that that is accessory dwelling unit. Um, we're also looking at some changes to the language of your mobile home definition. Um, and they are looking to encourage pollinator habitat development by adding some, um, recommendations and requirements to various sections of your zoning bylaws to encourage, um, uh, pollinating, um, practices. Um, there's also some changes to their, um, ground-mounted solar, um, installation. Again, bringing it current with state regulations. And then your last article is Article twenty-seven, which is the FERCog Amendment Proposal, which the, um, which Bob Dean just reviewed with, with you. So that is, it's, it is a, um, it is a bulky warrant.
Mm-hmm. Um. Are you gonna be there? Are you gonna be there for it?
Yeah, of course. I wouldn't miss it.
Okay, good.
I would not miss it.
She's bulkier than last year's or the year before that.
I know, I know. I will say that the Planning Board is having their meeting on, they have to per per chapter forty forty of the master laws that requires them to hold a public hearing for their bylaws, they are having that meeting on? Wednesday, April ninth, which is tomorrow, at six-thirty here in Town Hall. So copies of these amendments of their proposed amendments are on the town's website and also available in the town clerk's office. So that is your warrant, and if you would entertain a motion to approve it, we will get it posted as per your charter, I mean, as per your bylaws.
This is the warrant, right?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Town Meeting warrant for posting purposes.
Can I second that?
More discussion?
No, I think.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a lot of talking.
But you're doing well.
Gotta go out with a bang.
Pam's turn now.
Oh, we get Pam, yeah, we have an appointment here. The Frank and Regional Council of Governments, Representative Pam Guyette. So I guess we can make a motion to appoint interim Town Administrator Pam Guyette to represent the town at the FERCog Quarterly Counselors' Meeting.
Can I second that?
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You are there, Pam.
You're there. Add it to the list.
Another thing, I was gonna say, another thing to put in your resume.
So this is this is the, you are the alternate?
I'm the alternate, yes.
And I think that we had talked that come your annual appointments, there should be some conversation about whether you want to take on the 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 non-alternate position, the voting member position.
You could be the top dog.
Yeah, you could be the top dog. So that'll be something that you and that you and Pam can negotiate.
All right, we'll have arm wrestling in her office.
Arm wrestling, she's pretty tough.
I might let you in.
Fixed, fixed.
We'll talk about it. We will talk, I'm sure.
Okay. All right. Now we're up to, back, I see the back of our sheet, for the wastewater treatment plant solar array damage, I guess is update on that.
Yes. So on April Fool's Day.
Wasn't funny.
It was not funny, and I really just hope that it was some sort of, you know, photoshopped image that the operators were texting to me. I mean, honestly, I'm like, how did they do that? Aren't they clever? Unfortunately, it was not an April Fool's joke. A very large tree fell onto the brand-new, one of, we have two ground-mounted arrays at the wastewater treatment facility that just came online in the last couple of weeks. One of those arrays was squashed by a large tree that fell. It was uprooted. There's quite a bit of of standing water in that area, and the the root ball of the tree really just floated to the top, and that tree came over and took out, we estimate fourteen panels, about half. So we have contacted the installer, who is working on an estimate and proposal for replacement and repair. We have reached out to our insurance cover, our, they they will cover it under our general liability policy, so it will be okay.
Is there a deductible?
There's a one thousand dollar deductible.
That's better than what it would have cost us.
Oh, my goodness gracious. I mean, I can't imagine.
Jim's Tree Service come and clean it up.
So Jim's Tree Service came and cleaned up the branches and limbs that were on the panels. They are gonna come back when the ground dries out just a little bit with a crane and trucks to take down the other large trees that are back there. I hate the idea of removing the trees, believe me. Nobody likes cutting down trees more than more than I, but we have to protect the investment, and you can just see that they're likely to fall over and do the same thing. So we'll we'll do that probably in the next week or two and make sure that they're cleaned up.
You know, it's funny, it's you mentioned like trees coming down. I see more and more, and I, of course, there really is climate change, whether people want to believe or not, and it's been windy the last couple of years, or so, and I can recall for a long time.
And with these tremendous rainstorms that we're that we're getting, the ground is so saturated, and I think we talked about this in our hazard mitigation plan, and there are, the fire chief has pointed out too, that as these, as the root systems just can't hold on, and the trees are going over, it's creating a higher risk for forest fires. You know, it's it it's a cumulative effect. In this case, I'm particularly cross because we had just finished that installation, and we were just starting to see the benefits of the solar production. So we'll get it fixed, but it's and it's truly a nuisance, and I have every confidence that Pam is going to get you through this.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead. You you're agreeing with her.
I agree. Pam will do a great job.
She will. She will. Okay, so, looks like we have some documents to sign. Permits and licenses minutes, oh, minutes from March twenty-fifth. I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-fifth as written. Have you seen them?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did too.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, they're approved. We also have the warrant for the vendor warrant and payroll warrant for twenty-five twenty-two. I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll warrants twenty-five twenty-two dated April eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Let's see. Any items not reasonably anticipated by Chair, forty-eight hours in advance of meeting? The only thing I had in that was I was actually wrote some things down, but now I'm gonna have to hold off on them. I don't want to start forgetting Upper Buckland. My neighbors tell me, you know, we're gonna do that section of the road someday. I'd hurry with other things we got going, you know, up above the, and there was one of them, and then there was, oh, I know, it's another street, like, still at the intersection of Elm Street and.
Homestead?
Homestead, yeah, and Mrs. Aler convinced it to be again, you know, it's really dark right there. We take care of that. Okay, and the third one is, there is on the way up to Monroe Avenue, the Catholic Church heading up to it, not on Jones Side, the other side, you go partway up, and there's there's a hole that goes across the full extent of the road, and it's getting deeper. So I, that was gonna be requested a week in advance. Look, I don't know if, almost like a pipe or something must have been there or sunk in, I'm not sure, but it's quite a, it's getting to be quite a bump, and I think it's on our property anyways, but so that's all I have.
Wow, that's a list. You get all that?
I did.
All right.
Okay.
Be on it.
So just just to address the streetlight issue, that is, we we work with Palmery's, and that has been on their list. They are, there's some repairs to be done on Conway, and they know the one on Homestead, and then we just received another concern for one on Ashfield, so.
Yeah, the one at Homestead there, it's just, it's been a while, and that's an intersection, and the top, never mind Elm Street being dark to go up anyways, to go up the hill towards my house, but the very top, you know, if there's a light, it's like, wow, it's dark. I used to walk up that. I'd be afraid to now. No, I can't walk up.
I know. And if we're segueing right into Town Administrator's report, I can give you a couple of updates on, I think you're referring to Charlemont Road, repaving Charlemont Road in Upper Buckland? Is that the road you're?
No, no, I was thinking several years ago, when they first started, we had a group down from Elm Street to Upper IM, and the top of Elm Street, there was dirt, because it was kept dirt, because one resident wanted to keep like a good old country road. Well, they don't want to go to a country road, and it's deteriorating to the extent of it's, once I would have said hard stop, now it's gonna take some engineering. To be honest, they were flooding into people's yards and things like that. So I remember it was there, but they have, they've asked me, and I said, well, we're dealing with Avery, the other problems, and they all said, fine, but they're, they would like, hopefully, something done in the next year or so. I don't know if we can swing it, but but, you know.
Can we go back to select word number concerns?
Oh.
Oh, sure. Did we jump over that? Okay, I was doing it. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just wanted to say, you're going to be missed.
Oh.
You know, the service you've given our town has been incredible, and, you know, I've been in many town halls, and I, you really set a great leadership here in creating a real great team, and that's that's remarkable, you know, and I wish you I wish you well. I wish you weren't leaving, but I understand why. And and I have all confidence in Pam.
I know. So do I.
And I believe, you know, Pam and for Kara, that, you know, to count on those if you need need help, you know, because there's a lot to absorb this this time, especially this time of year.
I'm changing my phone number.
Yes, and and I'm also told Ms. Butler here that she'll be adding to her resume Town Administrator mentorship, because I will be calling her. She won't get rid of us that easily.
I will just reiterate what I said before. Thank you very much, and that you all make it easy. There's a collaborative spirit here that is unique. It is not something that you can take for granted between town halls and and town, you know, between municipalities. Not every municipality functions the way that we do. I'd love to take credit for even a fraction of that, but I really think that it's it's just what everybody brings to the table. So it's been a blast, it really has been. This has been a, I can't believe six years has gone by in the blink of an eye. There has, we've had some really intense crazy days, but somehow those have just sort of, you know, somehow faded away in my memory, and only the good times will 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 stay. I think your highway department works so darn hard, and I'm really proud of the efforts that they put in every day. I think your wastewater team, they are, they they do a job that very few people, as we are finding out, ever want to do. Your your rec team, I mean, they they take such pride in their in their facilities. Your library is beautiful, your transfer station, the Chris and Maddy, oh my goodness, the cold that they endure, and the positive attitude that they bring. I mean, and then walking into into Town Hall, you 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 will really catch us as a group, not not with a smile on our face, happy to see you, and wanting to make sure that you leave the building accomplishing what you came in for. So if I left anybody off that list, my apologies, but you be be very proud, and residents, please, be very proud of the team that you have, because it is not to be taken grant, taken for granted, so.
And you, we are, it's a great team, no doubt about it. We're supposed to be in the slight board. The captain's here, but you are the admiral. You're the one who cares through all this.
Well, as I sail off down the hill, no, I look forward to seeing everybody at Town Meeting, and and so if if nothing else, please make sure you come to the Town Meeting so that I can have a chance to say thank you to you each. I've made a lot of friends in the community and and hopefully, very few adversaries, but still, even those folks should come to Town Meeting and say say hello, so.
My mother's up here, but I might have reasons to drive down through.
Yeah, absolutely.
Down through there again, and I will, so.
Yeah, please. Please do. Anyway, I'm probably emotionally this close to not being able to hold it together, so we've gotta move on.
As we move along here, okay.
Thank you.
So we get right here, as we have public comments, but I don't see in the public here. Okay, so I think what we'll do right here, announcements of upcoming meetings. See, Buckland Planning Board will be held, will hold, I should say, a public hearing on Wednesday, April ninth, which is tomorrow, at six-thirty at the Buckland Town Hall, right here at Seventeen State Street. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide committee members with the opportunity to comment on proposed revisions to Buckland's zoning bylaws. The proposed revisions to the zoning bylaws include the following. One, changes to the accessory dwelling unit language in the bylaw to accommodate recent changes in state law. Two, addition of language promoting pollinator-friendly plants in the following bylaw, section six, six dash one, backlot, six dash two, cluster development, ten, wireless service facilities bylaw, twelve, site plan review, fourteen, large-scale ground-mounted solar electric generating installations, wow, and fifteen, adult-use recreational marijuana bylaw. And three, removal of the term mobile home, no longer a legally relevant definition. To clarify the bylaws where they specifically apply to trailers or campers, and newer HUD houses or manufactured homes will no longer be distinguished from other single-unit dwellings in the zoning bylaws. Copies of the proposed revisions are available for inspection in the town clerk's office, Seventeen State Street during the clerk's regular business hours, and on the planning board's webpage. With that, I would like to end tonight's meeting. Thank you, and a big thanks to Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, not even crying.
I was gonna give you grant updates, but we'll save them.
Oh, no, you don't need to.
I will let Pam 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 will prepare a.
Okay.
A list for next.
My next meeting is this time.